Just asking, uh, Aaron Cook.
Are you done, Matt?
Yeah, yeah.
Know what I'm talking about?
Downtown policies and rules.
He was at the opinion that we might be able to.
So I am really proud of.
It was basically.
Been complaining a little bit about all these. I'm proud of.
Somebody's marketing type stuff. We don't want to do that.
Now that they are, it's been a long road. I know. But now they do have a.
They'd issue it more and they'd.
They drive through Main Street.
I took over.
Across the. Or has.
I am not going to the west.
Straight across.
We had the department has to do that. I mean, so we stuck into that.
Period of thing.
And. Friend and he took it to the next level.
Yeah.
Into the block.
Yeah.
Street from what used to be C first Bank is.
What is it now?
I remember.
They just don't make economic sense.
Going to the.
Those. Anyway. Down the corner. Used to be a JCPenney.
The thirtieth. Just saying, yeah, it's. It's gonna be really nice.
But. My argument. That's exactly. Really being the department had so much money.
Three day girl right here.
Those are.
It will be a target.
I'll, I'll throw you some options to emails. Yeah.
Plan going fast.
Think I have a hole that day.
Ready to. We need the space.
Well, I'm just letting you know.
We definitely do.
You've had it for a while.
Be by then.
Good buddy.
They've been working on it. That's why I said.
For all you do. A long. Long time coming.
Uh, that they. That's.
It does look.
That it's become just more of a. You'd have to.
We spend our. I'm making sure things are polished, so. Hopefully.
Yours. Industry is at a certain level so that like.
I brought treat bags to Ron.
If I.
On. I brought, I brought treat bags for everybody.
Enforcement case for the code enforcement stuff. Wouldn't let me.
We appreciated the.
Games for drinking.
Yes. With the code enforcement.
When we had our.
I turn around getting.
Counties, cities and town meetings here last. I had told everybody.
Really?
Then nobody did. Deception. I came as Bruce. I had the cap for in everything. It's dressed like a hero day.
Flattery is.
Flattery will get you nowhere.
You'll come to order. Let the record show that everybody is present counted for. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
That's the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a quick reminder that we are recording this and we are on live on the internet. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Got no more alert. No, I'm aware.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have no signups for the public comments presentations. Mr. Laffelbein, the world is yours.
I do have a little bit of a handout for y'all and for anyone else that's. Once one just reminding everyone we've got at the library through our library system.
Some of our newer resources from our main library.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Yep. Anybody else? Um.
Go for that pastor.
So September is National Library Card Signing Month. It is have a program that we are jumping on board with the ALA to promote in our system. And so we thought it would be appropriate for our librarians and our supervisors librarians to visit their city councils. So I appreciate you adding me to the agenda. So if you look at your handout there, just a reminder of some of the things that you can get at the library. We have free wifi that's available inside and outside of the building 24/7. We often have folks that kind of sit around in the parking lot using it when they don't have access at home. Your library card, if you're a resident of our service area is free. Our service area covers five counties of Grant, Chelan, Douglas, Okanagan, and Ferry. We have 30 locations across all of those plus Mail Order Library and Bookmobile. And with your library card, you can borrow up to 100 items at a time. We have books, audiobooks, magazines, DVDs, music CDs, Blu-ray discs. You can place holds online. You can pick them up at your nearest library or you can have them mailed to your home. You can download ebooks, e-audiobooks and digital magazines 24 hours a day. Plus we have a variety of online resources. And our new language learning resource is called Mango and it's fabulous. It's really great. I had the chance to check it out myself and I love it. All of our libraries have computers for use by the public free of charge. You do not have to have a card to use the public computers. Our computers are all equipped with high speed internet. We also have the mentions at the bottom there that extended wifi range. Online, we have some great workforce development and digital literacy learning resources. You go to ncwlibraries.org/online/resources. There's also test and career prep for creating resumes, for job hunting, for exploring new careers. We have LinkedIn learning. We also have access to digital books, music and streaming movies. We have a printing system at the library that allows cardholders $5 per week to use toward printing, scanning, copying and faxing. And we do both color and black and white now. So it's a new service. And it's used quite a bit. During the month of September, people who sign up for a new library card will get a free lanyard while supplies last. They're really cool. I've got a bunch here. And I also have the capability to sign people up for cards here. After. We just wrapped up our summer program. We had over 250 participants in the summer library program, which is really great. We're bouncing back after a lull from the pandemic. The latest stats over the course of the year, we average about 2,800 people coming into the library per month. During the summer, our average circulation was about 3,200 items per month, which again is a great kind of rebound after some pandemic lulls that we've been seeing kind of hanging on. We are currently working on strengthening our community partnerships at the library here in our branch specifically. We are, we were a big part of the community resource forum and the resource fair that we had last month over at the ERC. We are partnering with Cloudview and the Hospital Wellness Foundation for their Little Sprouts program. We're providing storytimes weekly for that during their fall session. We do storytimes also at Hosanna Preschool once a month and over at the school district's Tiger Cup preschool. We've also done some visits this year to Columbia Ridge Elementary and Brant, making sure kids have access to library cards. We've been visiting the food bank weekly and bringing books to give away to kids, making sure that families who are using our food bank services also have some way to get some books for their kids for free. We began a new partnership with the Spokane Independent Metro Business Alliance in May. We are trying to grow that partnership. It's something that we think will help our entrepreneurs in town. We're looking forward to having more meeting space after our remodel project. And so they came and did a digital event in the month of May and that's available on the Simba website. We're also looking into partnerships with the Central Washington Disability Resources. They provide free basic computer classes for the disabled first Monday of the month in our meeting room. Coming up this fall, where we've taken, we usually take the month of September to kind of sit back and analyze our summer library program stats and kind of plan for the next season. So we have coming up our weekly preschool storytime is Tuesday mornings at 10:30. We've been getting a crowd of about 30 to 16 people to that one. We have a weekly sit and stitch group that meets year round and that's for anybody that likes to knit or crochet. They meet Fridays at 1:30. And there's a group of about 10 folks that are there all the time every Friday. We have a digital music lab that we are doing open lab time, uh, last two hours of our day on Mondays from four to six. That's for anybody that wants to explore making digital music. We also are going to be bringing back our Atlas program, which stands for Atlas Library After School. That'll be Thursdays from 3:30 to 5 for kids in K through sixth grades. And we're going to be exploring some building, doing some STEM kind of exploration, teaching them some different concepts in that. And also taking some time to just hang out and watch movies together. So it'd be a good time for kids. We're also going to be participating in the downtown trick or treat on Halloween. Really looking forward to that. We will also be giving away free books for kids on that day. As far as you're probably curious about our remodel program, which is coming up. So there's been delays for various incentive reasons. One of those is exciting and the two of our communities in our library program or in our library districts, excuse me, have been able to bring in new spaces. So Cooley City was able to bring in a space and also Royal City. And those were two communities that were not in the first group of libraries to remodel. So while we were dealing with some of the hurdles that we had with the building itself and, and all the signing off and things that we had to have done between the two parties, we allowed for those other two branches to come in. So our timeline right now is looking like we'll be under construction probably late spring next year. And we'll be closed for about four or five months, I think is what they're estimating right now. You can see a preview of some of the colors and things like that on our website. If you go to ncwlibraries.org/efreda and scroll down. There's some previews of what the floor plan looks like. And there's also some previews of what our kind of carpet and paint and furniture might look like. So, yeah. Any questions?
Well, you don't have enough to do. It's me. Good for you, Aaron. Could you explain a little bit about the library's funding sources?
Absolutely. Yeah. 95% of our funding comes from local taxes. We are a junior taxing district and we do receive funding from a very small portion from fines and fees and things like that. There's also some other portions that come through. We have a small amount of funding that comes through in the form of subsidies on some of our online resources. So with all the kind of the upheaval of state and federal level funding, it hasn't really affected our district as much because they fund portions of our online resources. So, yeah, but 95% of our, our income is from local taxes. So here with the Freda, we're a contracted city. So the city is making payments to the library system on valuation of property. It's at the same rate as folks who are outside the city. So the library district is a rural library district and the residents of the county would see like a line item on their property taxes that says library. Residents in, in town don't have that because the city is paying your portion of your library cost.
Cool.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Aaron, I think you do an awesome job. You do so much proactive programming. It's really fun to see all the different things you have the kids do. Generally speaking, do you know of a flavor nationally, what people's attitude is to the future of physical plant libraries and a more direct to consumer digital world? Is that changing things for the longer term?
I think there's, there's a lot of challenges going on right now to libraries, but libraries are and communities and individuals love for literature and literacy and libraries is showing that libraries are here to stay. You know, we have a lot of, it, one of the things that I love about our town is that I can look across this room and I can see so many of you are patrons. And I see you and your families coming into the library and yeah, I think that the, the thing that we're seeing right now is an expansion of services. Our mission as a library isn't just books. It is to connect the people of North Central Washington to vital resources that grow individuals and our communities. And so we're deeply committed to finding ways to serve our communities better all the time. So.
Awesome. Aaron, on a more negative note, I guess. With you being shut down for four months, are you concerned about that it might, what impact it might have on your patrons like, like COVID did?
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the things that we found in some of the communities that have already been remodeled. Is that when we don't really make an effort to stay connected in the community, to do those, to foster those community partnerships, we do see quite a reduction in patronage of the library because it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind. You know, when your routine gets disrupted. So one of the things that they are, are reimagining spaces team and our admins are trying to do right now is to decide some level of service that we can continue to provide in Efreda while the building itself is closed. So whether that's just a small little location that we rent or if they can find a way to bring a small trailer or something to the, the site and have that be where patrons can come and pick up holds, browse a small collection. We're unique in that we haven't, we're a size of branch that hasn't been under construction yet. So it's a new thing that they're trying to figure out. So yeah, thank you for that question. That's, that is an important point that we will be providing a smaller level of service through the construction. So, and our other staff will be helping out in other areas while we're under construction.
Have a question.
Yeah.
At one point in time, I seem to remember there was a conversation about access for like personal information, like telehealth for people who don't have resources at home. Is that still an option for people to come in and have some like private space to talk to somebody through telehealth type services?
Yeah, our meeting room is kind of small, but it is able to be reserved for just that. And we do have several people who come in and do. There's folks who come in and do one-on-one meetings. There's folks who do small group gatherings. The best way to reserve a space is to just go to our website, ncwlibraries.org/efreda. And on the right-hand side where it lists the resources that are available in our branch, there's a clickable link to reserve the meeting room.
Nice.
And you can go on and reserve it for that. We have the wifi there. We also have some AV equipment in the room. And, but that needs to be like arranged to use that, but.
Great. Thank you. A great service.
Yeah. Some of our branches have telehealth booths. The George branch got a telehealth booth and I think that the Warden branch got that as well. We will have two meeting spaces. Our, if you're familiar with the layout of the library, the room that used to be our meeting room will be again, the bigger meeting room. Once we're done, right now it's serving as a break room and staff room for us. And then there's a room that's just behind our main desk that's been functioning as my office for a while. I've been telling him, I don't need an office. A cubicle and the rest of them and all the fun. So that room is going to become a study room. A smaller space that can be reserved for, it'll be great for exactly those kinds of things.
Great. Now thanks for doing that. That's important. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, Kate. Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Moving on, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Sounds like we got a second to. Any questions on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Staff committee and agency reports. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um, what public work would I provide for you guys tonight is just a brief summary of the one week break that we had on Labor Day, September 1st, the third, 2025. To start off, um, maybe just pictures that I didn't agree about. Do you have any questions? Please interrupt me and ask. Starting off at approximately two o'clock in the morning, um, Labor Day morning, on-call staff got a phone call that they're experiencing low water pressure in the northeast part of town. The on-call staff member called in somebody from the water department and they came in and once they got to the shop, the, they were able to see through the SCADA system that our, two of our reservoirs were draining rapidly. They after doing a little bit of research, it was determined, they determined that the source of the water, the source of the water loss was a massive leak, but we didn't know where it was. And so the crews began attempting to isolate areas of town to determine where that leak was. I believe at about approximately four o'clock in the morning, they got the northeast part of town started getting it shut down. And the hospital was able to get water back because well, well, Tim was able to pressurize that zone. But they were still moving forward with trying to isolate where, where the water was going. And the next step that they took was to they started to go to isolate new installations, you know, where, where do we have new pipe? Well, the biggest section of new pipe we have is from our treatment plant to 282, well, actually to Walmart now. They, that goes past the new jail, turns back and tied back in at Walmart. They actually, they isolated that whole section of line to no avail. They went over to the new microtel. There's not a lot of water being there, but there is some new water being there. They isolated there to no avail. And as they continued working forward, uh, at about 7:30 in the morning, with the assistance of the afraid of police department, the leak was located behind the youth services building adjacent to the canal. And what you see there is actually a piece of pipe that was took out of the ground. What we found was a cast iron pipe that has an expected lifespan of 50 to 100 years. There's, we can tell that that pipe was put in in 1950. And I know it doesn't look. When that pipe came out of the ground, that pipe is in pristine condition. You don't, cities don't go replace cast iron pipe because it's cast iron pipe. They don't. It's not like it rots away and you have a problem with it. This is, this is probably the best pipe in the world you'd ever want to go under the canal. I mean, especially for the time that it was put in and the life that's still remaining there. Anyway, what we found was, but let me back up. The reason it took so long to find the leak was the location. It, it was approximately 50 to 100 yards behind youth services and down at the bottom of the hill. And the only water that was visible was water that was running down the side of the canal. The police department was, once the sun was up, they were able to find that leak actually pretty quickly. Under normal circumstances during daylight hours, I mean, Councilman Layman's, I even had a conversation with him here recently. He had a leak at his own house. It shows up rapidly. I mean, if somebody sees something, you know, whether it's a, a water running down your gutter or you see a puddle in the road that's not normally there. Water leaks usually, they come up pretty rapidly. Well, we were, we were hemorrhaging water over 4,000 gallons a minute. And at the time of day, it was just, it was impossible to locate. Again, what you see here, this is a piece of pipe that we took out of the ground. And after we got looking at it, you'll look at the, the far end of the pipe. You can see where the pipe is, it appears to be kind of jagged where the rest of it is smooth. What we believe is that that portion of that pipe has been leaking for a very long period of time. The reason that pipe's jagged is because the water under pressure has eroded that edge of that pipe. And if you could imagine how long it took the water to erode that pipe to that condition. The one bad thing about cast iron pipe is that it is, it can be semi-brittle. And when it starts to crack, it cracks. And that's why if you look around the edges, you'll see that the edges are rusty. That means that that pipe has been broken for a while. And if you look up in the upper corner, you'll see where the, it's actually clean. We believe that that is the, the last piece that was holding on before that pipe came apart. So here's actually, uh, after we got, we took the pipe and everything back to the shop. What you see in there now is, is that's actually the piece that came out of the pipe. And so the only thing we couldn't find was that little end piece. And if you look at it, you can see how tightly it fits. I mean, it, it, this was just a freak accident. And there's really, there's, there's nothing that we prevented it could have done to stop this portion of the problem. That being said, we did have a failure. We have a, it's called a SCADA system, which monitors all of our wells, all of our reservoirs. And our SCADA system worked flawlessly. The copper phone line that goes to our shop did it. We, the SCADA system made several attempts over a long period of time to attempt to call out employees. They started at about 10:30 to call out employees that we had a low reservoir and then we have a low pressure and reservoir, and pressures of one. And it continued to try to notify that, but because of the failed copper phone line, it was unable to make contact. And then as a secondary effort, it went, tried to send an email. That process didn't work and it finally did get to, one employee did get notified at about one o'clock in the morning. But his phone was on silent. He was asleep. So it didn't get, it was, he got a text message and an email and, but his phone didn't work. Since then, we've moved forward with we're working with the programmers for our SCADA system to get our SCADA transferred over to voiceover agreement protocol so that we rely on the fiber for SCADA to call out. And then once we get that stabilized, we're going to go backtrack a little bit and we're going to look at other secondary options for our SCADA system. And one of them might be just cellular where we can use something similar to a cradle point that monitors the the network coming in. And if that network fails, it will automatically switch to cellular and monitor that until the internet comes back or whatever has to happen. But we're trying to build redundancy into it. We are trying to learn from our mistakes and move forward. That's just kind of a brief summary. We are going to have a, we are going to put out a press release, I believe, tomorrow with, to pass on this information.
Is the rest of that pipe in need of examination? I know that was, it sounds like that wasn't on our radar. I don't remember ever seeing that come across on our aging of infrastructure. But.
Like I said, that, that cities don't replace pipe just because it's cast iron. It's, I mean, to answer your question, you really can't. It goes under the canal. You can't. We jokingly talked about it at a staff level. It would have been nice to have a camera for that. Well, all your cameras are, are made for inspecting sewer lines. The last thing in the world is if you want to drop a camera down the water, sewer camera down the waterline. I mean, we were being a lot facetious, but.
Sure.
We, we learned, we don't have any documentation of it. It's a little amount from past employees that about in the early eighties, that exactly where that pipe broke was struck by a cat. And the staff had to go relit those joints in. Our conversations at staff level, um, we're assuming a lot. We think that that might've been when it got a pinhole leak in it, you know, and that's all it took. You know, but it might've took 20 years for that pinhole leak to even become a less bodily irritant.
Sure.
But the, we don't feel that the integrity of that pipe is in danger. If the pictures, if you go back and look that, that pipe's been in the ground since 1950. And if you look at the interior and the exterior of that pipe, for the most part, it's not rusty. I mean, it's not like, I mean, you pull a galvanized pipe that's been put in in the sixties, it maybe serves your house. I've seen the galvanized lines where there's, the only thing holding it together is the rust. But yet this is, this is exactly how it came out of the ground. We didn't clean it up. We didn't do anything. And so we feel that the integrity of that pipe is intact.
I sympathize. We talked about the other night, we got approximately 43 miles worth of water line. We were trying to find the leak in there and it was ironic that it was right next to the drain of the canal. So we couldn't really find what you were looking for, but yeah, that's a.
That is, that's a conversation that this we had early in the morning was, it was my biggest fear is that it's under the canal. I mean, cause it, after a couple of hours of our staff not being able to find it, where is it going? Where can it go where we won't see it? You know, where somebody can see it. And just, it so happened, at least luckily it wasn't under, it was adjacent to.
Think part of the, uh, part of the issue is when you big picture the whole thing, it was a culmination of a perfect storm. That there was a lot of little things that went into effect that caused this and part of the fact that all, most of the water that leaked out of there disappeared.
Correct.
It went into the canal, which will be billing the Bureau of Reclamation for the water that they're using. Thought, but uh.
They're going to find us.
That's right, that's right. There'll be some issues, but the fact that that line was in there for so long with nothing. I mean, it was there before the canal was there, so you know, to be.
And that's another point, Mr. Mayor, in all honesty, we were there first. And they chose to reroute that line to put the canal. And it still falls back to, we were there first. This is probably the only time we ever have a trump card on the irrigation district, but. Um they, they are the ones that rerouted this, and then now they're telling us they don't want the line under their canal. Our argument is, well, fine, provide us another way.
Right. Yeah, we're, all the options are are on the table, but then. But part of the stair step of that was how quickly, A, we found it. Because it's not, it's not like there was a big puddle someplace that you go find and backtrack to the issue. It was pretty much. Almost invisible from, from start to finish, but as our police department, being Johnny on the pot-spot. And finding that was a, was a plus for us, because part of it is the mitigation of the damage behind that. And the, the good part about it, as much of a hindrance as it was to the city. And to the people with the boil order and all the things that went behind it, that thing was soup to nuts, four days from. From finding it to not a solution, but a fix in it.
Um I want to give a shout out to staff, to public work staff, because, and not, not just the water department, because it took. It took all of public work, well, actually, it took all of the city. In, in the grand scope of things. There was representatives from every department of the city involved in some fashion or another between the first and the third. Um the public work staff had that line put back together by Tuesday afternoon of the second. Well, evening, it was about seven o'clock, we had it all buttoned up. We chose to not turn it back on because of not knowing what's restrained outside of the hole. Um we wanted to rely on the compaction of the earth around it to help hold everything back together. Um you go backwards just a little bit. We did install um the restraint joints on what we put together. Um. That red collar that you see there, that, that's, that's a um, a pipe restraint, what that is, is. Um we're grabbing on to that repair coupler. And it bolts together with a gasket in it and those blue nuts clamp down. So what we're doing. With that is every fitting we put in there, we restrained our repair. So in other words, it can't. It can't come apart, but we wanted to wait and put the, the soil on top of that, because we don't know. Outside of the hole, how far it is to the next joint and where it might have been able to push and come apart. So we chose to not actually turn the main back on until Wednesday morning. By uh ten o'clock Wednesday morning, we had that main back on in service. And and um we're very lucky as a city, the only thing that was out of service was the youth services.
One of the things we identified is the shortage of backup systems in our, in our infrastructure, and we've been trying to focus on that with more recent projects. So like, obviously, the big water tank and new pressure zone over there, we'd recognized, you know, previous generations almost by. Nature of geography had located all of our water on that side of the canal, ninety percent of the populations on this side of the canal. Amidst a super, a similar event, a couple of years down the road when things are up and running, does the new system offer. Backup systems of water pressure and such for the town in the event of a similar catastrophe?
If the reservoir and the new well ten would have been in service, the, probably the, the. Um negative pressure situation would have been avoided. The, between um well, well ten, being able to pump approximately two thousand gallons a minute. And almost three million, a little over three million gallons of water will have in the reservoir, it would have, it would have lengthened that time. But the, the loss of pressure up in the northeast portion of town, probably more than likely would not have happened. And so, and then just building on that a little bit, with rebuilding of. Uh well ten and the drilling of well eleven up there, we're actually, where we're headed is the majority of the water is going to be on. This side of town pushing or not.
Right.
Pushing, but we're going to have more water on the east side of town than we can use.
One of the things that I. Feel like could be considered, I guess, as we look at updating infrastructure. Technology is there that could help with location. Um I appreciate what the staff did to find it, but it feels like something that maybe could be. Utilized with maybe some sort of sensor or something like that to identify area, the area it could be in, at least to. Somewhat narrow down, so that you have an idea where to be looking. Um driving around and finding it is great, and that worked this time, but it, it costs precious hours for people who didn't have water service during that time. So I don't know, I realize that's a budget impact, and it all comes down to, can, what can we afford to do? But it would be ideal to have some, some sort of zone system or something like that, so that when you get. Notified there's a, a water issue, pressure is low, it also tells you where to go look. Um I don't know what kind of tech is out there, that's not my world. But there's got to be some sort of tech out there that can help narrow things down.
There's.
To identify.
There's some things that we're going to work on within, inside of our own SCADA system.
Okay.
That we have now.
Okay.
That um. I don't know that it is going to go as far as, is what you're speaking of, but it is going to go further than where we are.
Okay.
Um and then that, that's also going back to, I'm sorry, I want to loop back around on improvements. If the pressure zone five would have been in service. The booster pump station, the reservoir and the, the pressure easing valves that we've just installed. Um and actually, they would not have lost pressure on the pipe, because the valves wouldn't have let the, allow the water. To, well, it would have started bleeding water down, but it wouldn't have allowed it to go to nothing.
When do you think that that pressure zone will be up and running?
As soon as we can fill the other one.
Oh, so it's, it's all pending on the.
We found it, we ran the booster pump station yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And we were, um, we put the coggiest amount of water up into the northeast section of town and let it bleed back down. And we ran it back up the hill again, and then our phone rang a lot for dirty water. Because we were stirring a natural sediment that's in the pipe. But the, we were able to set the pressure easing valves, we were able to test around the booster pump station. And we're waiting for the reservoir to be in service, and we'll put the booster pump and that pressure zone in service.
Will that sediment issue then go away, once you've got everything up and running?
It's a naturally, it um. It, it doesn't matter where your water comes from, there's, there's natural sediment in the water. I mean, it just, it's, it comes out of the ground, it, it just. Um and it that, it, it ends up in, in lines. Well, we were shoving forty-five hundred gallons a minute through that line. And the, the speed of the water going through it just stirred up that sediment.
Okay.
And so, yes, it will settle back down in the pipe, and when the speeds are more normal, it won't stir that up. And you won't have the dirty water situations.
Okay.
The only, the only other scenario that I could say that would cause that would be a fire. You know, if all of a sudden we were pushing a whole bunch of water up there for a fire, then all of a sudden you could get a similar situation.
Okay, interesting.
And just for clarity, the booster pump and all that, that's that big building you see at the bottom of uh, of Division Street out there, because sometimes. Associate, you know, there's not a lot of signs out there. So when we talk about that kind of stuff, and you think, well, where is that? Well, that's that weird building sitting at the bottom of Division.
This is a really left-field question, but they, um, obviously, the system as we have, the water is up on the hill there, it came down through the gully, goes up to the other side. We've been struggling with low pressure on that side, particularly amidst all the growth we've had for so long. Do we have any concerns with the infrastructure that's up there, being able to handle the proper amount of pressure that it's going to be getting soon? Is there any means to test that? Cap.
Um not only with, with our own system, but I believe that there's going to be homeowners that do experience leaks on their own site.
Yep.
Um just because of the, excuse me, um. Aging water services that have only had forty-five pounds of pressure on them are all of a sudden going to get an increase. Um I, I, I believe that we, there will be some repairs that are going to have to be made. Um but. It. We need the water up there.
Yeah.
It, it, it's going to take time and it's a necessary use.
And there's probably no way for us as the city to go in and be able to scope out where that might happen. We basically just have to wait. And see, see if we have an issue or not.
That's, yeah, I mean, if. All kidding aside, if I could figure it out, I'd go buy a lot of tickets.
Yeah, I, I get you. And they'll let us know. Yeah, we'll hear about it.
But no, and I, I mean, really, we're, if you. We've, we've gone through and replaced most of our steel water line, which is a big culprit of failing. Um we have, still have a fair amount of AC line, but AC line, it, as long as you don't disturb it, it. It's pretty happy. Um now, if you go to dig around it or anything, it, it will, it breaks. That's just the nature of it. But you, as long as you're not, I mean, it's like. You don't ever want to build a new road over the top of an AC water main, because you're going to end up digging up your roof. Um but I think the city of Efrida has done well to um. Prepare for that, you know, they, with the big steel water line replacements and, and those upgrades. That what's the big unknown for us, I believe what we're going to see more of is, is leaks of water meters. Whether it's on our side or on the customer side. I think that's more where we're going to see small failures. I don't think it's going to be any. I don't think it's going to be catastrophic. I think it's going to be probably several leaks on the backside of meters that might just be. Um tightening up the center, tightening up a meter or a failure on customer side. Most, most of our stuff is new each or.
And there's no way, like we talked about the, the sewer line, you've scoped so much of that in the last year, and with more to come, obviously, there's. What, what did we talk about the other day? How many thousands, hundreds of thousands? Yeah, there's.
Line about fourteen thousand feet, we TV about fifty thousand feet, probably have. Fifty thousand and two.
Left to do, but there's no, but there's no mechanism for that on the water side. We're just, we're at the mercy of.
It's funny, Ray and Sean and I, I actually had this conversation today. It, it's a pressure pipe, and it, they're just. The technology, I mean, there's might be tech out there to do it, but you just don't do it. I mean, you TV sewer lines. You, you just don't, you don't see TV of water beams.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. All right, moving on to resolutions, resolution twenty-five oh six one, declaring surplus equipment.
Mayor, council.
We didn't think.
We, the staff is uh going through um our inventory of items, and we have several pieces of equipment. Just be determined to be surplus. Um one of them was rather a disappointment with this one. Uh we were actually planning on. Um keeping this truck and turning it into a vehicle for equipment rental. And it had other ideas and transmission went out, and we could learn it was about eight thousand dollars for the transmission of the trucks, and we decided to. We're going to go ahead and kick this can down the road. This is a used truck that we bought from P U D. Um. And so what, what we're asking, uh the items we have, I, we can, if you'd like me to, we can go through the items that we have listed, or I can just summarize what we're.
How many you got?
Eight. Uh basically, we have um this pickup, we have some miscellaneous wire that was removed from the um. The wastewater treatment facility through the remodel process. There's actually quite a bit of wire that we pulled out. We have contacted a scrap company from Spokane that is more than willing to come down and pick it up and pay us for it. Um it's all palletized and on reels. Um we have the distant, we, last night at the. At the uh council retreat, we talked about the UV lights that came out of the treatment plant. This is the UV light, the several of these stainless uh fixtures that you'll see is the UV light system that came out of the treatment plant. Um and then we have, these are two blowers that were part of the old process. They're um. They were used to uh blow air into the treatment process that are no longer needed as part of that treatment process. Um. Then we talked last night about replacing the uh all four motors in the lift station portion of the treatment plant. Uh so we have four of these seventeen horse motors that we're going to replace that, um, these are actually still in service, but we went ahead and. Wanted to get them surplus, so that when they do come out, they're not sitting around. Well, just get them out, get them gone. This is an old snowplow that um, don't know what year it is, it doesn't fit anything we have. Um it's in need of repair. It's really, it's probably just a base, that's scrap value. We just want to get it out of the yard. These were two string trimmers that were in, I believe, from a garden shed or something that the city inherited, whether it was a. Community garden or something, I don't, and the, the guys don't, they don't use the, the. Ben string trimmers, they don't, they don't have a, a value to us. We want to get them out of the, out of the cemetery shed. Uh same with this chipper, it was inherited from a garden shed that we took over. Um it's too small for any use that we have. Um it's a homeowner-sized unit, um no use to us, we're just taking up space. That's just a picture of the chipper, a backpack sprayer, we. We have our own sprayers that we use, we just, we don't, don't utilize this piece of equipment. Again, it's just taking up space. And these were game, game cameras that were used um in a attempt to. Theft prevention or vandalism at one time. They were, they've been underneath the old pool for several years. Uh we're moving to get rid of them. And these are just some old white fixtures that were up on top, they're up on top of one of the buildings that public works. Um not really sure where they came from, they don't, we don't need to have them around anymore, um or we just want to get rid of them. And that's more of the UV lights. That's not it. So what staff is asking for is for you guys to please um. Make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five dash zero six one for twenty twenty-five, declaring certain city-owned equipment to be surplus. And authorizing this disposal.
All right. Thank Rob, need a motion for R twenty-five dash oh sixty-one, the surplus equipment.
So moved.
Thanks, Mike.
Second.
Thanks, Phil. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thanks for the pictures. Appreciate that. It in here. Resolution twenty-five oh six six, the WOTEC service agreement.
Good evening, council. I wish that exciting pictures. Uh this is a schematic that I got from WOTEC. Uh essentially, we have a couple of projects that are kind of converging. Uh one is the three-six-five labs uh project. And then also, we have a project that's been ongoing with uh moving over to SharePoint and trying to get it out of our server. Uh where they converge is, we can't get off our server because our current VPN is, is managed through that server. And it's cost, cost prohibitive to, to move it to the cloud. Uh in discussions between uh Vision IP and MAC Dispatch. Uh the current system that we've made to state networks and stuff has been in place for over twenty years. Um there's an option now where we can direct, essentially connect directly to the uh. Uh government network, and in doing so, we can switch. In that process, change our VPN, uh which ultimately will save us money, we won't have to maintain the server. And then the yearly cost of that VPN is lower than our, our current cost. Um to do that, we have to, to contract with WOTEC, they're kind of the gatekeepers of the IGN. And manage that service um at a tune of, I think it's two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month for that service. And a one-time fee of, of five hundred dollars. Uh currently, we're paying more than that in. Uh our connection to uh MAC Dispatch through a VLAN system, uh which we can abandon. So it's awash, and actually, it comes out ahead on, on our side, uh savings money. Uh and then there's substantial saving with decommissioning of the servers, so. Um ultimately, the project would save approximately. So, um, ultimately the project would save approximately, uh, $9,000 a year. And then we'd have a more efficient direct connection with the IGN. Uh, management of the current system is difficult and Vision IT has to, anytime we do anything with our VPN, we have to coordinate with MAC Dispatch to get all the numbers and everything to, to mash up. Uh, now Vision can work direct with WOTEC and we can make changes to the VPN more efficiently. So, um, I'm asking for, um, a motion to adopt resolution 66, uh, accepting the Washington Technology Solutions WOTEC Primary Services Agreement in terms of service for secure connectivity as proposed.
All right. Thank you, chief. Need a motion for R 25066?
So moved.
Yeah, a second, it sounds like Katie. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. R 25067, the curb grant application approval.
So this is another grant application coming through from Dave Bren. Um, it is for a joint, um, economic development, uh, land development with the port and the city. Um, it would be up to an $100,000 grant with a 20% um, match. Um, and there is, uh, we're looking at an agreement with the, the port to, to break that 20,000 into, uh, 10,000 for us, 10,000 for them. Uh, but it would be, uh, would be to, to do a, an economic development plan jointly. Beyond that, we would be looking for an authorization for the mayor to sign that grant application. It would be due, um, that application would be due on the 26th of this month. So it is, it is a push to get it done.
Nice. If I can, just to be clear, you're not authorizing the money right now. You're authorizing the application. Upon approval, then we would be authorized. You would, you're committing to authorizing the money at a later time.
All right. Anything you want to add to that, Dave?
No, we're in full support of it. I think it's, uh, a big program that we should definitely take a look at.
Right. Well, we appreciate the teamwork. That was good. Need a motion to accept R 2567, the curb grant application approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Phil.
Second.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Well, that ends our public portion of the meeting tonight. We are going to be going into executive session for four days.
Approximately 20 minutes, I believe.
20 minutes to where we're going to discuss the, um, performance of a public employee. When we come back to that, unless there's something that happens in the executive session, we will probably move to adjourn after that. So you can stay, but you won't stay here. And otherwise, good night and thank you.
Do you need signatures? You guys need signatures, you can bring up your papers. I'm like, when do I? Hmm? Those kids are like, when do I?